She's so dramatic, posted caption, I say no regrets But that's just to cover up, I know the truth, I lied attack You slept on me, collected, seizing out, I keep you up at night I should keep you up at night, oh I seen this play out before, I moved on and now you're bored My new relationship is popping, something you can't ignore I seen this play out before, I moved on and now you're bored My new relationship popping, and you just can't ignore it When you can't stand the picture of my girl all up on me You said, "Do you ever wonder what me and you couldn't be?" And the truth is, I don't think about it often, honestly Girl, who do you think you're fooling? Every caption that I read I see through, but you want me to believe it's the truth Every caption that I read I see through, but you want me to believe it's the truth She wants reactions, the captions, they never look enough But that don't include when she think about what we could've had You laugh at me, don't drag your feet, not a shit weighing you down all day long Cause you're on your own I seen this play out before, I moved on and now you're bored My new relationship is popping, something you can't ignore I seen this play out before, I moved on and now you're bored My new relationship popping, and you just can't ignore it When you can't stand the picture of my girl all up on me You said, "Do you ever wonder what me and you couldn't be?" And the truth is, I don't think about it often, honestly Girl, who do you think you're fooling? Every caption that I read I see through, but you want me to believe it's the truth Every caption that I read I see through, but you want me to believe it's the truth But I moved on from you, when I met her Hit you with the truth, I know that hurt you don't I got more to lose, cause I'm with her And now you're just a moment caught in time, that you're frozen up Cause I know that you can't stand the picture of my girl all up on me You said, "Do you ever wonder why me and you couldn't be?" And the truth is, I don't think about it often, honestly Girl, who do you think you're fooling? Every caption that I read I see through, but you want me to believe it's the truth Every caption that I read I see through, but you want me to believe it's the truth I moved on from you, when I met her Hit you with the truth, I know that hurt you don't I got more to lose, cause I'm with her And now you're just a moment caught in time, that you're frozen up I'm going all the way, we go there every day We've gone away, oh I'm going all the way, hope we be here someday We lost our way When I sleep at night, I see you in my eyes We found our way You take me so high, I'm falling way down Falling We were always waiting, never lost our desires Falling We were always dreaming, don't break me tonight It's the right time What I want is mine It's the right time Oh, you're so fine It's the right time What I want is mine It's the right time Oh, you're so fine So fine So fine And it's the right time It's the right time You're so fine What I want is mine You hold me in your arms, never sleep at night Oh, we've been dreaming We were going all the way, but now we're here to stay We have found our way And when we sleep at night, I look into your eyes I can't find what to say, oh You take me so high, I'm falling way down Falling We were always waiting, never lost our desires Falling We were always dreaming, don't break me tonight
But now it has happened, no use in talking The silence between me and you has never had meaning It was
I know that you turned away I know that I couldn't stay, no People, they always change, and nothing stays same And now I think there's something wrong Yeah, I've been missing all your pillow talk Now I... Yeah, don't wanna lose you, wanna lose you, wanna lose you Tonight
The Ricky Moore Stick a whole song
I wanna say I'm alright But you know just what I'm hiding Cause when I hear your name, I think I want you back again And now I think there's something wrong Yeah, I've been missing all your pillow talk Now I... Yeah, don't wanna lose you, wanna lose you, wanna lose you Tonight Tonight And every time I don't reply back I'm just getting my mind back Cause I can't let you come right back So give me my mind back, give me my mind back, give me my mind back I can't let you come right back, right back, yeah, yeah Tonight, yeah Don't wanna lose you tonight, don't wanna lose you Don't wanna lose you tonight
Sit down, show me your pretty face Don't hold back all the words I try to evade And I draw all of the broken lines And you go in circles where you can never read my mind Cause all we do is fill in empty chairs But I can't see you, cause you're not really there Cause all we do is fill in empty chairs But I can't see you, cause you're not really there Legs crossed, your hands are put in place Inside, I want to feel the love that we raised And you know, nothing is ever right Let go, that's all we know, cause we're giving up this fight Cause all we do is fill in empty chairs But I can't see you, cause you're not really there All we do is fill in empty chairs Music keeps playing, but my heart stopped beating The music keeps playing, but my heart stopped beating Cause all we do is Fill in empty chairs But I can't see you, cause you're not really there Cause all we do is Fill in empty chairs But I can't see you, cause you're not really there Someday, off we go To Brooklyn, to Paris It's okay, almost dead So broken, broken in my heart Dark and dark and see a heart and mind gussy Dark and dark and see a heart Dark and dark and see a heart and mind gussy Dark and dark and see a heart And I block you, block you, block it Block you, block you, block it Block you, block you, block it, knock Someday, off we go To Brooklyn, to Paris It's okay, almost dead So broken, broken in my heart 다시 난 혼자 있는 게더 편해 네 가식적인 웃음이 날 불편하게 해 혼자 내버려도 난 정말 아무렇지 않아 안녕 사실 난 괜찮지 않은 것 같아 Someday, off we go To Brooklyn, to Paris It's okay, almost dead So broken, broken in my heart
I fell asleep in the morning, woke up around one And I'm thinking about times when I would never come home You're the only thing now, it's got me slowing down And it's not a bad thing at all, you just want me around I know I can be the man you need, a man Only for you to see, only, only I'm giving you the key to open up the tree And swim within the sea, only, only Only, only Only, only Only, only Only, only Waking up in the morning, I got you by my side And I'm thinking that I could stay for the rest of this life And I know it sounds crazy, but when I'm with you I forget all about the pain, but I remember you I know that I can be the man you need, a man Only for you to see, only, only I'm giving you the key to open up the tree And swim within the sea, only, only Only, only Only, only Only, only
When July comes to my, it will light up your heart And to love you in the storms of the fall Of the fall Talk to you, and thinking I walked to And run to your depths Talk to you, and thinking I walked to And run to your depths Promise not to leave me I want you, I want you, I feel love you I want you, I want you, I feel want's me I want you, I want you, I feel love you I want you, I want you, I feel want Promise not to leave me I thought you'd say I love you I thought that work comes for you Really? How to get to know you That we're dating or not yet Promise not to leave me I want you, I want you, I feel love you I want you, I want you, I feel want's me I want you, I want you, I feel love you I want you, I want you, I feel want Don't you go there not far, always with you Always with you, always my love
You always said, "Don't worry, don't worry, don't worry, baby" But now you make me sad Cause nobody, nobody can take me to sleep Now I'm here with no one else And every day, and every night It doesn't matter where I go Because inside my head is full of Your pretty face and beautiful voice Oh, oh, oh Could you be the one, only girl? Could you be the one, only girl? Don't worry about her Don't worry about her Don't worry about her Don't worry about her But I can't leave you, girl Because inside my head is full of Your pretty face and beautiful voice Could you be the one, only girl? Could you be the one, only girl? Don't worry about her Don't worry about her But I can't leave you